Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Golden Valley City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Jackie Wells and I’m a Voter Service co-chair of the League of Women Voters of Golden Valley. On behalf of our league, we welcome the candidates for city council, our audience members here, and those viewing from home. The Golden Valley League is holding this forum for voters to meet the candidates and to compare and contrast their ideas for Golden Valley. The League of Women Voters is a 97-year-old nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. The League’s bylaws and policies state that League members who are candidates for office, close family members of candidates, or members playing a leadership role in campaigns may not play any role in planning or executing candidate forums. These members, and the rest of us, have no knowledge of the questions that will be asked or in what order candidates will respond. The League encourages its members, and all of us, to be involved in the political process. We encourage informed and active participation in government. We welcome all who are interested in learning about a variety of issues to join our organization. Membership information is out in the hall, and we encourage you to learn more about League by talking with League members here tonight or visiting our website at l w v m n dot org. Tonight’s forum is being video recorded by CCX Media Northwest Community Television. We ask our live audience to quietly listen to this forum and to again please silence your phones. The video recording will be on c c x media dot org and YouTube in the next few days. The views expressed tonight are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. Golden Valley has a statutory Plan B form of government, also known as the Council Manager Plan. It consists of the elected mayor, four elected city council members, and a full-time city manager. The city council appoints the city manager and sets the direction, policies, and ordinances for the city with input from residents and recommendations from city commissions and staff. The city manager is the chief administrative executive who oversees implementation of council policies and directives. On Election Day, Tuesday, November 7, Golden Valley’s residents will vote for two council member seats for four-year terms for which there are the five candidates that you see here. Golden Valley elects council members at large, and they all represent the entire city. I am pleased to introduce Melissa Musliner, who will be our moderator tonight. She is a member of the League of Women Voters of Wayzetta Plymouth area. Thank you, Melissa, for volunteering to moderate this forum. Melissa will first explain the format of tonight’s forum. Please join me in welcoming Melissa to our forum.
Thank you, Jackie, and good evening. I’m afraid this is a tiny microphone. Can you hear me out there? Okay, good. Thank goodness. I wanted to welcome you again. Tonight’s forum will last up to 90 minutes, and the candidates are seated here in alphabetical order. We drew straws at the beginning to see who would go first, and then we would proceed alphabetically. And coincidentally, it was Larry Faunest, so we will start the first question this way. And then after that, I’m using a randomizer, and so I will let the person know who will answer the question next, and then who’s on deck after that. The format will begin with candidates responding to the questions sent to them earlier by the League of Women Voters of Golden Valley, and then they will be followed by questions from you, the audience, and any that were emailed in earlier to the League of Women Voters. And there will be a one-minute closing statement at the end. If you need a card, please raise your hand, and one of the League members will come around and give you a card, and also pick up any questions you may have. We will ask as many questions as time allows, consolidating by issue, and all candidates will be given the opportunity to answer each question. The choice of questions will be made by me in a good-faith effort to reflect the interests expressed tonight by you, the audience. Please remember that while disrespectful — excuse me, respectful disagreement with a candidate’s position is fine, personal attacks are not allowed. And if you don’t have your question answered during this forum, I’m sure the candidates will make themselves available to you after the forum. The five candidates tonight for Golden Valley City Council are Larry Faunest, John Geese, Jillian Rosenquist, Jim Ryan, and Andy Schuler. Please join me in welcoming them. We have timekeepers, so that each candidate has the same amount of time to respond to the questions, and our timekeepers are located right here in the front. The timekeeper will hold up a card when there are 15 seconds left, and a stop card when your time is up, and we ask that you finish your sentence and stop at that point. The opening question, and this again will go to Larry first, is why are you running for Golden Valley City Council, and what are your qualifications? You will each have up to two minutes to respond.
Thank you. I have a prepared statement that I’ll share with you tonight, and I’ll start off by extending my thanks to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this candidate forum and promoting the principles of democracy. I am Larry Faunest, and I’m running for reelection to the Golden Valley City Council. I’ve called Golden Valley home for 21 years. I purposefully moved here from the Como Park neighborhood of St. Paul because of Golden Valley’s reputation for excellence. As to my background, I have earned a bachelor’s degree in political science and a master’s in natural resource management from the University of Minnesota. Over my career, I have held management positions in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. I’ve been responsible for hundreds of employees and annual budgets in excess of $10 million. I retired in 2014 with the sale of my business and have since focused attention on my duties as a Golden Valley City Council member. I’m grateful to have had the privilege of serving. I’ve grown into the council position, and in the process accomplished many positive results for the city, its neighborhoods, and residents. There remains much to do in moving Golden Valley forward, and I believe I have the experienced skills and drive to get it done. My campaign platform includes four strategic themes: targeted development and redevelopment that meets local needs and grows the tax base; infrastructure maintenance and enhancement that ensures vibrant, safe neighborhoods; that preserves the best of Golden Valley while thoughtfully planning for the city’s future; fiscal stability that reduces the city’s debt; ensures adequate budget reserves; restrains property taxes; and negotiates a more equitable fiscal disparities formula; effective governance that promotes transparency; timely council communications; and processes that are mission and value-driven. Please visit my website at W W Larry Faunest dot com to learn more. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Geese, please.
Good evening. I’m John Geese, and I’m running for city council. I’m running because I truly love this city and wish to preserve and bring into it for future generations to come. I’m running because I have acquired the leadership skills, team-building expertise, now of a history of getting things done. I’m a 24-year resident with seven kids, four of which graduated from Armstrong High School, and the youngest three attend Meadowbrook and Hopkins Junior High. I’m an energetic individual who always does my homework, and I personally know each and every council member currently serving and everyone from the past since 1998. I’ve served on boards and commissions, and have been a community activist for numerous issues and causes, so I have given my time and talents to better this city and its future. My goal is to be elected to serve the citizens of Golden Valley with an ear for listening and also bring forth ideas like community policing, teaching our kids safety skills and protection skills so that parents can learn to let kids play, and learn social skills and coping skills rather than just arranging play dates; working with county and state officials to complete the Blue Line Extension; developing a plan to reduce the current $90 million debt down to a more respectable $25 to $30 million; helping the current council members find solution; and being a middleman to mediate struggles that are evident between some of the council members that are currently working together; working on finding solutions to local challenges and staying in our lane of authority; work on environmental issues like buckthorn and reducing carbon footprints; and finally, using common sense. The council can’t do everything for everyone, but I can listen and I can be proactive, and we can make change in order to preserve what we have and also to look forward in the future. I ask for your vote on November 7, and thank you all for being here tonight and for the League of Women Voters for sponsoring.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenquist.
Thank you. I’m Jillian Rosenquist. I grew up in Minneapolis. I have a bachelor’s degree from the University of Washington Seattle and a law degree from the William Mitchell College of Law, now Mitchell-Hamlin. I practiced intellectual property law prior to staying at home with our three children. They are 13, 15, and 9, and are in the Popkins Public Schools. I most recently worked for two and a half years at a nonprofit serving low-income entrepreneurs and inventors. My husband runs a small family-owned union construction company in Minneapolis. My experience includes being appointed by the city council to the Open Space and Recreation Commission where I’m currently the vice chair. I was also appointed by the council to the Light Rail Station Planning and Citizens Advisory Committees. I’ve been an active volunteer and leader in our community, starting with the Moms Club of Golden Valley, Meadowbrook School and Parent Teacher Organization, Scouts, Little League, and community events such as Lilac Planning and Pride. Until I filed for office, I was actually president of the board of the Golden Valley Chapter of the League of Women Voters. I’ve spent a lot of time for many years getting to know Golden Valley residents, working on issues that are important to Golden Valley’s present and future, such as Brookview Community Center, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and bike and pedestrian mobility. Because of this, I’ve developed good relationships with council members and city staff, residents, community leaders, business owners, and elected officials, past and present. I bring an independent voice, a commitment to reasoned and considered decision-making, a willingness to ask hard questions, my legal skills, city experience, a desire to serve, and a passion for Golden Valley. I hope to further develop relationships and partnerships in our community to better connect us and enhance our city, so we keep the mix of urban style, suburban tranquility, and community spirit that we love while preparing our community for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Ryan, please.
Thank you. I appreciate the role that the League of Women Voters fills in our community and as well as well beyond its borders, and I also appreciate all of your interest and attendance, which reflects your commitment to civic engagement for those of you who are here, present, or watching. I’m Jim Ryan. I’m a fresh option as the only candidate making his first offer of leadership on the council tonight. I believe that public leadership requires strategic knowledge and responsibility, which would then lead to successful outcomes. I recently retired after working 40 years for the federal government, the last 38 years with the Social Security Administration, and during my tenure at Social Security, I began in public claim service, so I was trained, and my job was meeting with people on a face-to-face basis, talking to them at critical times in their lives about the financial security and other supports that our programs would offer. I was then later elected by peers to union leadership. I became the chief steward, and then was representing folks who worked at the local social security offices throughout the state of Minnesota and outside of its borders in Wisconsin, North and South Dakota, and then led the local as president. In project management, including as a field office manager for a local office, I worked on several key process improvement initiatives. I led facilitation. I did negotiation and outcome management for interdisciplinary teams over the last 15 years, and much of this was expanding on principles of interest-based bargaining, critical to look at the stakeholders and their interests in our community. I’ve been married for the last 39 years, and my wife and I chose Golden Valley as the best location to raise our growing family when we were expecting the third of our four sons. I look forward to you picking up the information and supporting me. I’d appreciate your vote.
Thank you. And Mr. Schuler, please.
Hi. Thanks for coming with us tonight. Thanks for the League of Women Voters and Northwest Community Television. My name’s Andy. A little background to explain my motivations for being here. I’m the youngest of three siblings. My father was a Golden Valley firefighter for 20 years. My mother’s a paralegal and a saint. And I was born in a house that loved built off of Lilac Drive behind Walgreens over there. This is my home, and always has been and always will be. Side note, actually, that Spring Gate Shopping Center would make an excellent place for a light rail station. And there’s a parking lot already there. Anyway, after that, we moved into a nice place on Knoll Street near Hampshire Park. 10 years later, my folks brought us to Plymouth, a city I lost a lot of respect for once they cut down all the trees in the 90s. After some college and traveling around and getting into adventures, I settled down with my special lady friend, and we found a quaint little place on New York Avenue on the east end of Golden Valley, right next to the church where I used to attend and my favorite hidden beach in the world. A few months after moving in, my neighbors informed us that there was plans with our neighborhood circled for redevelopment. These plans have been reprinted every year since then despite organized and vocal disapproval by a wide majority of those who would be most affected. I can’t accept that history just simply repeats itself without a little bit of a fight, so because you see, in 1985, we moved out of Lilac unwillingly because they just tore that house down to put in a office space in an otherwise residential neighborhood. So am I qualified? Well, that’s subjective. I certainly believe so, and I’ll never vote to put a wrecking ball through your recently remodeled kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we will move to the questions from the audience. Candidates will have up to one and a half minutes to answer these questions. Again, I’ll be asking you randomly. What do you consider the top challenge facing Golden Valley? The first one to answer will be Andy Schuler, followed by Jillian Rosenquist.
What do they make top?
What do you consider the top challenge facing Golden Valley?
I would consider the top challenge is the lack of representation that we gained from our elections. Last time these seats were filled, there was about 62% of the electorate that went home without a candidate that they voted for. So I would like to fix that with a modest reform, simply eliminate the limit that says you can only vote for two candidates, and just let people vote for whoever they want to support. Better chance of them being satisfied with the outcome. It’ll eliminate the vote splitting, and it’s democratic. I think that’s a serious issue with the disconnect between the voters and the outcome of our elections.
Thank you. Now will be Ms. Rosenquist, followed by Mr. Faunest.
I think the top challenge for Golden Valley right now is dealing with debt and the necessary investments that we need to make in our community to not only maintain it, but also to set it up for the future. We have a new community center. We’re going to be looking at potentially reorganizing our entire fire department and potentially having a new fire station. We have a lot of water issues to deal with, and so I think that there are a lot of big things that need to happen in Golden Valley, and they have to happen responsibly and also in a forward-thinking kind of way.
Thank you, Mr. Faunest. And following you will be Mr. Geese.
Very good. I would agree that the debt is a challenge for the city. Currently, we’re sitting somewhere between $80 and $90 million in debt. In the last four years, though, the city has paid down almost $20 million. We were at $100 million. So the council, the current council, and executive team are taking this very seriously and working diligently to find ways to curb spending, hold the line, and also to address the debt and pay it down over time. The goal is to hit a $30 million debt level in the next several years, and that seems to be achievable, and while $30 million sounds like a lot of money, it’s like perhaps your household, you individually with credit cards, home mortgages, and the like, there’s a certain level of debt that the city will probably always carry, but at the moment, that debt is uncomfortably high and needs to be lowered.
Thank you. Mr. Geese?
Yeah, I agree. It was the first thing on my mind, the debt, you know, it’s completely high, but you know, we’ve had the street reconstruction program, pavement management, so undoubtedly, you know, costs were going to go up, and it had to come from somewhere, and it had to go through bonds, and now it’s time to start looking at a plan to pay that down. Another thing I’d say is light rail. You know, the Southwest Line is getting all the attention right now. I personally went and met with Mike O’Pat, the county commissioner, the first two weeks of the campaign, and got educated on the light rail situation with him. We still got to get the application to the federal government, and we still have to work out an agreement with the railroad. There’s a lot of things that need to get done, but as an elected council member, you know, I can work with state and county and officials and try to find solutions to get some of this stuff done. You know, Governor Dayton has the power and the authority to put the Blue Line up front in front of the Southwest Line over there, and they seem to have all kinds of arguments and not getting along, so I think if we all get together and come up with a plan, maybe we can scoot ours in front of theirs. We’ll see. I don’t know.
Thank you. And Mr. Ryan?
I think that the — probably the biggest question or challenge for the city is staying true to the long-term vision of what we want our community to become, and that really incorporates the debt service. It includes light rail. It includes all of these things, but I think what we need to make sure is that we’re keeping that kind of proper priority and balance, and I think that that’s going to be the — those all fit into that long-range plan, and so therefore I see that as the greatest challenge to our community. I do think that the debt service is important. I think that my background in working with government agencies with very limited budgets, and especially the fact that one of the things that I’ve taken on in my retirement is on the board of a nonprofit organization where money is really tight, I think that what we’ve described here in the process that we’ve made already seems to be prudent ways to bring that debt under control, and I think that we’ve done a good job of moving forward the transportation issues in our community. We just to make sure — we need to make sure that we’re continuing to implement those things that are part of that master plan.
Thank you. And now, our second question, which I will read in a moment, will go first to Mr. Ryan and then to Mr. Schuler. Public safety accounts for the majority of the city budget. Crime is down, according to the police. The fire department is mentioning the need for a new station and closing two existing stations. Do you believe that a majority of the budget should be allocated to public safety? Are there other areas where you feel Golden Valley should budget more? And what are your thoughts on the possibility of two fire stations closing and then building a new fire station?
That’s a long question.
It is.
A lot of different aspects to that. Here again, I think that the city has made prudent decisions so far in prioritizing all of the different budget categories. If I understand it right, the public safety in our city is pretty much staffed, and they felt that they can accomplish more than just adequate but proper levels of public safety with the current staff that we have right now. I’m not seeing that increasing fire staff is most of the answer. I think restructuring things, and I agree with the idea of looking at possibly closing two fire stations and building a new one, as a way that will address the biggest problem with fire safety in our community, and that is the response times.
Wonderful. And Mr. Schuler?
Yeah, I believe that whatever the firefighters and police need, we should let them have absent, you know, militarized police force with tanks coming down the streets, but they’re the professionals, and they know what they need to do to get the job done. You know, I guess I’m a little, being the son of a firefighter, a little more willing to be open, real open about that, but yeah, it’s pretty much as far as public safety goes, we need to do whatever we can to keep people safe.
Thank you. And I forgot to mention, I’m so sorry, that Mr. Geese was next, and then followed by Mr. Faunest.
Well, the role of government, if you look at it through history, it’s the first, foremost role is public safety. You know, for me to sit here and say, should we close two stations and build another one? I’m not going to make that determination here because I haven’t seen any studies, and that’s all kind of going through the process right now, and I would confer with the fire chief and the police chief, and also, of course, the city manager and the staff and what they recommend. You know, when we have aging buildings and whatnot, sometimes it’s more conducive and cost-effective to rebuild rather than to work on a current station. I understand that. But if we look at the station in question, I believe up on Golden Valley Road, which would then provide parking maybe for the light rail, and then move that station over to over where the park is over there, it sounds like, you know, a good option as long as, again, response time isn’t affected, and it’s only a couple of blocks, so I think it’s something to be looked at. There were other parts of that question that over my head here, so I’ll just go with what I said. Thanks.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Faunest.
Thank you. Safety is a high priority for the city council, and to the point that was made by the folks asking the question, we do have a very low crime rate in our city, and our response time by our fire department is very good, but it could be better. What we’re looking at as a city council is the decommissioning of the Golden Valley Fire Department building. It’s antiquated and not up to standards, and building a new facility on that side of town that will have sleeping quarters, because what we’re also experiencing with our fire department is that we’re having a harder time recruiting firefighters. They’re all volunteers, save five or six, that are here at the City Hall campus, and we want to make sure that we are able to respond to both medical emergencies and fire emergencies very quickly and professionally. So we’re looking at modernizing the fire facility right across the street from us here, and then at the new facility, including sleeping quarters and the like, to make it a much more efficient operation. And so the response time and our ability to have well-trained responders on call will be greatly increased.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenquist, please.
Serving on the Open Space and Recreation Commission, we were fortunate to have Chief Crowley come to us to go over the study that was done on fire service in Golden Valley and to do a presentation and prototype for the potential new station that they would like to do, as Councilman Faunest described, in terms of really reorganizing the fire department and delivering it in a cost-effective and efficient manner to the residents of Golden Valley. The one thing that I expressed to the chief that I was not happy with was the proposed location of a new fire station at Shide Park, being especially on the Open Space and Recreation Commission, I’m very opposed to losing open space and green space in Golden Valley, and I think that we need to look and continue to work on this plan, which, you know, given the condition and the time that the other two stations were built, without accommodations for women firefighters, without adequate bathrooms, without sleeping space, with the maintenance that needs to be done, it does seem like a fiscally prudent thing to do, but I would like to creatively look at the location of that fire station and making sure that we preserve green spaces and parks in our community. Also, I will agree that public safety is one of the most important parts of city government, and I think that it always has to remain that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, and Ms. Rosenquist will go first, followed by, excuse me, Mr. Faunest. Golden Valley is preparing its 2040 Comprehensive Plan. What are a few key changes that should be made to Golden Valley’s Comprehensive Plan?
Thank you. Again, being on the Open Space and Recreation Commission, I’ve been privileged to work on at least the park portion of that, and I’m very excited with what we’ve done there. We’ve gone meticulously through each park and looked at it and looked like — it looked at it and thought about what it needs to look like in the next 20 years. Some of the key parts of the plan for me involve connectivity and our Some of the key parts of the plan for me involve connectivity in our community and transportation. I think we, in the next 20 years, are gonna see a lot of changes, and I think we're already seeing that. We wanna get around our community and be better connected in ways that don't involve motor vehicles. We want to be on our bikes. We wanna be on our feet. And we wanna get there safely and conveniently. I hear from seniors that they can't cross Golden Valley Road when they walk along the creek. I have teenage kids. They like to bike around. I want them to be able to get there safely, and I think everyone in our community does. We wanna meet the needs of our senior population and make sure that people who use walkers, who use wheelchairs, can also take leisurely routes and can get places. And I think that that's one of the most important parts for me of the 2040 comprehensive plan, really looking at the work that our Bike and Pedestrian Task Force has done and implementing that in the next, in the next few years. And really looking at how we are going to be living differently in this community in the next 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Faunest will be followed by Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. As most of you may know, there are seven categories to the 2040 comprehensive plan. I'll just rattle them off for you here. Land used, housing, water resources, transportation, parks and natural resources, economic competitiveness, and resiliency, and sustainability. And I'll comment on the latter and on the housing topic. We're looking for the first time, as a city staff and as a council, at sustainability and resilience. And what does that mean? Well, as we all know, our climate, for most of us, is changing. And we're not sure just what the future holds in store. So we're trying to anticipate what we might have to do as a city in order to react to those changes. It goes beyond that, though. We're looking at how we maintain our infrastructure to meet the growing needs of our community. And to the point that was made earlier, especially to our seniors. We have about 25% of our population as senior citizens. And the vast majority of them are looking to age in place in their own home or in an apartment here in the city. Everything I hear at the doors, they love Golden Valley. And that brings me to the housing issue. Very quickly, the city council is moving with deliberate speed to address affordable housing in our city. And I'll hopefully have a chance to talk about that more later.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Ryan.
Well, I kind of agree with both Jillian and Larry. But I guess I would place a little bit higher priority on housing as kind of a part of that comprehensive plan. Because I think that the whole plan kind of fits together in so many ways. But I think transportation, increasing the kind of connections for people of all ages is gonna be critically important. Those are, those, the aspects of that are rapidly changing. The idea of driverless cars, for example, or drones, you know, providing transportation options that we never dreamed about. But I think one of the things that's the most urgent, and I do think that the council has moved with, I think, as you said, deliberate, deliberative speed or kind of has responded to the urgency, is in affordable housing. For a lot of years, we've been very happy, but fairly static in the kind of housing options that we have here in Golden Valley. And I think there's a very great potential for that to change pretty rapidly before our eyes. And so that's why I would say that's one of the things that we need to pay special attention to.
Thank you. And Mr. Schuler?
I agreed with a lot of what Jillian was saying about parks and open spaces. And I would like to see some emphasis on an alternate way of transportation, you know, perhaps like a simple streetcar route for people, you know, just for the benefit of the environment and seniors and people such as myself who don't like driving. It's just very dangerous, actually. I was looking at statistics, which I don't know why I do that. It keep me up all night. Thousands of people are killed needlessly every month in America because of cars. And it's, one quote was a emergency worker called it a silent catastrophe because we don't see it live on TV or anything. Sorry, that was grim. I'd like to see speed bumps, too, along the, if we're planning on doing those roundabouts, I think that would be a good way to keep people slowing down around those. I've seen some in Champlin area where they kind of speed through those. But else, there's a lot to go through in that comprehensive plan. But I think it's kind of a gist of it, focus on safety and alternate modes of transportation.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Geese, please.
Yeah, comprehensive plan, I mean, these things develop and change. And what you can say in, you know, 2020, by 2025, things happen and that plan now becomes something other than what it was planned. You know, the Met Council has a lot of say as to what that comprehensive plan looks like. And we have to work within those parameters of what the Met Council wants as far as, you know, growth and whatnot. Housing, you know, affordable housing, 30% of a person's income that goes to housing is considered affordable. I've heard statistics in Golden Valley that we have about 55% affordable housing. That's very important, that we need to keep that number and even perhaps increase it. What's affordable to me, obviously, at 30%, may not be affordable to somebody else. And I think we have to be careful and vigilant to the fact that Golden Valley is a first ranked suburb. There's a lot of wealth there. And there's also very middle-class neighborhoods. And we have to kind of preserve those middle-class neighborhoods and then those houses. A lot of those houses are aging and getting older, and we can't just bulldoze them all down and put up, you know, million-dollar houses because we're basically changing how the city's going to look. So I'm gonna be very, very vigilant on how we deal with housing, you know, if elected. And we have about 1,300 new apartment buildings that are, you know, coming online here if they're not already occupied. More are coming down the road here that have already been approved and built. And also with the comprehensive plan, sustainability, Larry was talking about, I'm pretty environmentally proficient as far as, you know, climate change and whatnot. And it's a serious issue. And as it, being a first sergeant in the Minnesota Air National Guard, that's something we really need to keep our eyes on also. Thanks.
Thank you. Many of your residents are concerned about housing. And so the overall question will be, what is your housing plan or vision? But I will read you some of the comments to preface where the question comes from. What should the city council be doing, if anything, to help older people remain in their homes? Should the city council be doing anything to encourage the building of one-level houses, which is often stopped by retirees? And then another one is that housing stock is being decimated by builders tearing home existing housing stock and building new, taking away some of the mid-century charm. What do you consider to balance the charm with new and innovative? So again, the overall question is, what is your housing vision for Golden Valley? And I'm sorry, I should tell you who goes first. And that would be John Geese, please.
Okay. Again, you know, when we look at our houses, I've had the ability to purchase two houses in Golden Valley. And each house that I had, I totally renovated. I made it more energy-efficient. I put new plumbing in, new electricity, new windows, new floors, new everything. So I took something that was existing and made it more efficient. And I think if we develop programs within the city and on the city council, we'd be very effective in this, instead of bulldozing something down, is to take something that already exists and make it new again. And then when you do that, you can help keep things affordable. You can also teach people simple things. I mean, just changing a window out in a bedroom saves enormous amounts of energy. If you look at some of the things we can do to keep the elderly here, you know, we've got great apartments that are going up, one-level apartments, I mean, sure, but we gotta have places to put them. And we gotta have people that are willing to build them. We can look at slowing down the tax increment financing that we give a lot of the big developers that come into town and build, you know, the big apartment buildings. And maybe, why can't we look at giving individual homeowners breaks somehow to help them rebuild and make things more affordable for them? So there's a lot of different ideas that are out there. Again, it's just a matter of getting people together and educating ourselves with other groups beyond the city of Golden Valley to have expertise in this and come up with solutions.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, and you'll be followed by Mr. Schuler.
Okay. I guess what I would like to see is some expansion of kind of the public-private partnerships as far as looking at options that are, what I would say are best practices. I think that a lot of the things that you've talked about where people have rehabbed an existing home, making it more suitable for what the needs are in the future, I think that holds a lot of promise. I don't think that that's really applicable to some of the housing, especially the ones that I've been door-knocking on, where the challenge is in a lot of steps, for example, that just don't fit into that one-story aspect of it. But I think just being aware of what the options are and making sure that our planning commission, as I think they already are, is aware of some of the kind of aspects that we should look at to make sure that we're approving and encouraging those best practices in our own community.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Schuler, to be followed by Ms. Rosenquist.
I'd like to see us continue the mid-century appeal of our city. If I was going to be voting on any new development projects, I would insist that they have a classic-looking charm to them. Definitely one-level townhomes for seniors. Like to focus development on hubs or downtown-type areas so we don't have so much sprawling. That way, people don't need to, we will, you know, commute so much, can have everything just, kind of like in my neighborhood, they wanna tear everything down and build basically a whole new area with apartments. And it just doesn't make much sense to me and many people in the neighborhood as far as TIFs go. I'm a little weary of any welfare program for millionaires. But whether or not a project is built the old-fashioned way, or TIFs, or bestowed upon us by Her Majesty, the Met Council, I, my first priority would be to survey any impacted neighborhood, door-knock, find out what the people living in that area are feeling about, if they even know what's going on. A lot of people are in the dark about this stuff. So I would make a point to speak to people face-to-face and get everyone's feedback on what they want their neighborhoods to look like. Thank you.
Thank you.
For a lot of people in Golden Valley, what's affordable is being able to remain in the home that they own and that they love for as long as possible. At the Arts and Music Festival, there was a wonderful nonprofit with a table that does specifically serve seniors and connects them to snow-removal services, yard services, and other kinds of in-home services to be able to do that. And I think that the city, and especially in partnership with the Golden Valley Human Services Foundation or other kind of great community organizations, can really kind of try to publicize and promote those kind of organizations that can help. We can also look at our processes. A lot of what I'm hearing at the doors is people's frustrations in terms of they want to do some kind of remodeling to a mid-century home. I met a couple who bought it and they plan on aging in place there. They wanted to expand somewhat on the ground level to make a wheel-in bathroom. And we need to make sure that our processes as a city accommodate those kinds of alterations that people would like to make in their homes so they can age in place. And that those processes are accessible, they are easy, they are user-friendly, and there's something that doesn't frustrate our residents or discourage them from staying and aging in place because we value, we value them. And we want to make sure that they feel welcome in this community and they feel like they can stay in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Faunest.
Thank you. Senior citizens in Golden Valley are a focal point for the current council. We have been looking at any number of ways to facilitate people aging in place. And if not in place, then again, in our community, in an appropriate apartment complex or the like. And just to share with you that Schute Company is, or has purchased, the former KFC location, and they will be building out a 96-unit senior housing facility there, very close to the Hello complex that recently opened. We're also looking at the need for additional sidewalks and benches so that seniors can get out into their neighborhood, and when they tire, they have a place to sit down and relax until they're ready to move on from there. One-level housing is a challenge in Golden Valley, especially new one-story housing. The city is fully developed with a few rare exceptions. And new housing is hard to come by, and the law, the land that's to be used is very expensive. So it is a bit of a challenge when it comes to building new one-level housing. In terms of maintaining the mid-century feel, that is what has made Golden Valley and our neighbors to the south, St. Louis Park and Edina, special. And that's something that we want to hold on to.
Thank you. And a couple of you did mention tax increment financing, but the residents would like to know all of your opinions. What do you think about using tax increment financing within the city? And we'll start with Mr. Faunest, to be followed by Mr. Schuler.
Okay. As you probably know, the members of the city council sit also as the housing and redevelopment authority for the city of Golden Valley. That authority, unfortunately, does not have any money to work with in terms of building out new facilities, new homes, new whatever. We are really dependent on the marketplace and private money, private developers, to come into the city and build the type of housing that we're looking for. TIF, tax increment financing, is really the only good tool that the city has to work with in order to motivate developers. There is a legal clause that but for TIF money provided through the city, a project wouldn't be completed. It wouldn't be built in the first place. And so the city council is guided very carefully by that legal requirement. And we are very judicious in allocating TIF funds. But there are real needs in the city for developers to meet special circumstances that they find. And in the land that we have here, we have a very interesting topography here in the city of Golden Valley, and we have very poor soils. And sometimes they need the extra help. And I'll just add quickly that TIF money also then helps build infrastructure for the city: streets, sidewalks, corner lights on the streets, and the like. So it's an investment in our future.
Thank you. And I know I've let a couple of you go about one and a half sentences longer than the stop. I will make sure to do that for everybody by the end of the evening. So now, Mr. Schuler.
Yeah, as I said before, it wouldn't be necessarily my first option. I know Larry was saying that options are limited. I think first things first, we gotta get that debt under control and worry about the people living here now instead of worrying more about people who are hypothetically going to come. I've also read some research that stated there's not necessarily a guarantee that it would benefit more than if TIF money wasn't used. So there's a lot of research to be done there. Would like to get a little bit more public feedback on that. Let's see, there's a lot more to say about that just a second ago. Just basically, you know, I'm more worried about people who live here now. I think that's part of the reason my folks moved to Plymouth was because they didn't feel like they were being respected by the city. And I just wanna make sure we do what's best for the residents of our city. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, to be followed by Ms. Rosenquist.
Well, I want to thank Larry for the kind of basic understanding because I think that that, when I've been talking to people at the doors, that's one of the things that a lot of people think that, of TIF as kind of a giveaway, that our city government has kind of thrown money at people who many kind of question how deserving that was or how effective it was. My understanding is that, you know, I think within that explanation, there's always been a very strong connection between providing that as an incentive for doing something that's in- that's in the best interest of our community, and I think that we need to make sure that we're following that principle. I think there are two things that I would say should be used as a priority. One is the urgent need for affordable housing as part of, as a strong element that will make our community stronger. And the other one is where we have watershed or water-issue concerns that make a piece of property very difficult to have a developer come in and do the kind of improvements that are going to provide the benefits to our community unless we offer that kind of an incentive for them. So those are two very restricted options where TIF should be used, and it is in the best interest of our community, but to follow that, you know, restriction very carefully, however.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenquist.
Yes, TIF is a tool that local government can use, and it is guided by state statute and rules, generally restricted to areas that are considered blighted or something that a developer would not normally be able to develop because of certain conditions. And I think an example, much like Larry was saying, in terms of the fact that we have a lot of poor soils and we have a lot of water issues in our community, and using that as a tool can allow for an area like the Decola Ponds that needs substantial work done, that a developer alone could not finance, and it allows us to solve a problem at the same time, taking an area that has been underutilized and make it into something that's an asset for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Giesi, please.
Tax increment financing, not in every situation, but I will say that in some situations, depending upon the developer that we're talking to, it's no different than publicly-funded stadiums, okay? It has its place, but we are Golden Valley. We are a first-ring suburb, and people are wanting to live here. This is prime real estate. It's not like 1960, where we had to sit there and use a tool like that to bait people to get here and build homes and build businesses and develop this city. We are a developed city. So for me to say that I will always, you know, if elected, approve tax increment financing, that's just not true. I'm not going to go down that road. It's going to have to be a very prudent situation for me to approve tax increment financing, because if you've got a developer that has a lot of 20 and 30-somethings that want to live in Golden Valley, and they see a piece of property, and they know they can build an apartment building there and fill that up within two months, I don't think tax increment financing is going to do all the difference in the world with that developer. They already know the numbers before they get started. They know, otherwise they wouldn't build. And if they don't know the numbers, then we shouldn't be dealing with them, and we shouldn't be giving them tax increment financing to do so.
Thank you. Should Golden Valley have organized garbage hauling or keep its current policy of residents choosing their own haulers? Popular question. First, we'll start with Mr. Giesi, followed by Ms. Rosenquist.
Well, been knocking on doors, and, you know, this issue does come up, you know. I ran in 2013, and it was an issue then, and it still seems to be an issue in 2017. You know, I used to kind of be against a one-hauler, because I, there were a lot of little haulers that existed within the metro area, and they had businesses. They had families, and, you know, they were people that started a trash hauling business up, and they might have had two or three trucks, and they did great service, and they did a great job. There's really not many of those contractors left. I think there's one, you know, in the northern suburbs, but they've all been, a lot of them have been bought out, and they're all big conglomerates. And the small, mom-pop-type trash hauler, you know, even Randy started out small, and I mean, he's done very well, but he's got a lot of trucks out there. So that's no longer really a small company. I guess I'm willing to look at it, and I'm willing to look at the numbers and to see how it all works out, but it's not something I'm just going to say, yeah, let's just go to a one-hauler option here. We really got to look at what is the residents of the city desire. It's probably like our federal government, it's 50/50, so, you know, elected official, you got to make decisions and do your homework, and the decision you make may not be popular with everybody. And, you know, if elected, I think the most friends you have are when you win on election night, because after that, you're obviously going to lose some along the way.
Thank you. And Ms. Rosenquist, please.
Yeah, there's no winning with this one. This is, like we see playing out in New Hope, if everybody's reading the Sun Post, there's a real split in the community. It tends to be pretty close, and the people on either side are very vocal. I think that fortunately, we can look toward communities like Bloomington, which have implemented organized hauling, and it seems to be going quite well, and looking at their, what is charged there, it's about exactly the same as I pay a private hauler here. And so I would tend to think I would be in favor of exploring it very seriously, because as someone who still has a nine-year-old and has kids who play in the street, I really would love fewer trucks in the road, and I also want to take the investment that we've put in our streets very seriously. And if we reduce the wear and tear in the streets that we have spent our taxpayers' hard earned money on, then, and we can maintain them for an extra 10, 20 years, I think that's truly an investment in benefit to the city.
Thank you. Mr. Faunus, to be followed by Mr. Ryan, please.
Thank you. In the recent Morris Leatherman survey of residents here in the city, which is a statistically valid survey, for the first time, 51% of those surveyed indicated that they wanted to see either consolidated hauling or coordinated hauling, to 38% who were dead-set against it. So clearly, there is a change occurring in our residents here in Golden Valley. You may have seen the article in the Star Tribune. There was a study done, and it was indicated that a garbage truck passing your home 52 weeks out of the year is equivalent to 1,200 cars. We've invested tens of millions of dollars in our streets, and these trucks are ruining them. They're tearing them apart, going from one house at one end of the block down to the other end of the block to pick up another can, and speeding in between and screeching their brakes to make the next stop. Not only are streets being affected, our air is being polluted. I don't know about your streets, but it's covered, mine has hydraulic fluid all over it, and it can be directly attributed to our garbage haulers. I think the next council needs to take a hard look at coordinated or consolidated hauling.
Thank you. And Mr. Ryan.
Well, this is not something that just affects Golden Valley. If you've been reading the Star Tribune and looking, you've been kind of keeping your ear to the pulse of the broader metro community, this is an issue all over the Twin Cities metro area. And I think that what we've heard are different elements from anybody who's talked about this issue here before us today. And I guess I see that as looking at the elements of the economics of it, taking a good, hard look at that, and making sure that we're using the right interests and working out whatever are the best terms that's going to work out for the benefit of our community. And I think that we should find a way to look at the survey, for example, and find out what the residents' interests are, look at the economics, go forward with that. But I think that this is one of those things where we ought to also plan on taking a look at it, and I guess what I've been finding people seem to be responding to is maybe making sure that we're putting it on the agenda in another five years, because we never know how those economics are actually going to change during those intervening years. And as some people have talked to me about is, you know, we might end up having drone trash pickup five years from now, and we certainly want to take advantage if that's going to be a significant improvement for our community.
Thank you. And Mr. Schuler, please.
Yeah, some agreements here with Larry, and I think Jillian hit the nail on the head. As long as we choose a hauler that has comparable pricing and thinking green as much as they can in that business, I would definitely support consolidating. I mean, how many noisy trucks do we need going down the same street? I know in our neighborhood, we all kind of got together and decided, for the most part, that, you know, we're all going to choose one company. And I don't consider waste a product that really needs to be in the free market. It, you know, it's all going to go in the ocean or a landfill, some seagull's going to choke on it. I mean, we need to think almost further than just the trucks picking up our trash. You know, we always need to do something, put more emphasis on, you know, recycling and things of that nature. And I would just encourage everyone, just as individual human beings, to try and use less waste, see what you can do about reducing that impact just on an individual level. I know me and my special lady friend have a really, we've barely really taken the garbage out. We try to just recycle as much as possible, and I know there's some flaws in that system, too, but that's kind of where I stand. And unless, you know, a horde of residents came down the street with pitchforks demanding that they want their own hauler of trash, I would change my mind.
Thank you. I know this is being talked about in other cities. Do you support raising the age to purchase tobacco to 21 in Golden Valley? And the first one to answer that is Mr. Schuler.
Sure, I guess I haven't put much thought into that. Tobacco is one of the worst things that has happened to this country, and, I mean, aside from opium, but I guess I don't have a strong feeling about that one or the other. An 18-year-old is an adult, you know, they can make their own choices. But I would like to transition to that in saying that when cannabis is legalized within the next few years in Minnesota, we should look into having some of those shops in our city, because we can make tons. It's like, it's the green gold of the 21st century, and never killed anybody. I think prohibition laws are one of the biggest blunders of the 20th century, right up there next to the Cold War. We should definitely not criminalize any type of mental addiction, health addiction. We should do something like some Switzerland and other countries do, where they focus on harm reduction and treatment and compassion. The same with cigarettes and alcohol. That's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Rosenquist, to be followed by Mr. Giesi, please.
I know that this has been something that Edina and St. Louis Park have moved on, but I really honestly think this is an issue that's more appropriate to be dealt with at the state level than at the city level, particularly as the wife of a small business person. I really want to be sensitive to the fact that the impact that changing those laws, especially within a small community, would have on a few select businesses. So I wouldn't be in favor in the council acting on it, and I would prefer that this be dealt with at the statewide level.
And Mr. Giesi.
No, I'm not in favor of this, I'm not in favor of raising the age to 21. You know, we keep putting all these regulations in place and telling you can't do this and you can't do that, and I think we're really ignorant to the fact that young kids today are smoking a lot less than they did when I was in third and fourth grade, I'll tell you that, because that's when a lot of my friends started. You know, it was very common to go to a party of World War II generation people, and they're sitting there drinking and smoking heaters all night, and, you know, got me on Uncle Pete's lap, just bouncing me up and down. I think we need to educate. There's a lot of different things we can do with our youth to educate them and trust that they'll make smart decisions. We start regulating everything and telling them they can't do this and that, do that, they're going to do what I did. They're going to go and do it anyway, because they can't do it, so they want to do it. So I think we just need to be a little more prudent with how we look at everything, and everybody wants everyone to be safe. I get that, and we don't want kids to start smoking early. I get that. But I'd rather have forums and bring kids in and educate them and empower them, rather than telling them, you know, they can't do this because they're going to do it anyway.
Thank you. And Mr. Faunus, please.
I actually have this as a part of my platform, and if you go to www.larryfaunus.com, you will see it there. I don't disagree with comments that have been made here in terms of the effect on small business or the like. However, young people are very impressionable, and they are being targeted by the tobacco industry to become users. And I think as the adults in the community, we have a responsibility to protect our young people within reason. The health costs alone for people who become addicted to smoking are astronomical, and we all are paying that price through our taxes. St. Paul is not tackling this issue. It is not tackling a lot of important issues, and it's the cities who need to step up and put pressure on our state leadership to get something done. And so I don't have a problem in joining Edina and St. Louis Park in saying, this has to stop.
Thank you. And Mr. Ryan, please.
Well, I really don't think that this is an appropriate issue on a, within the boundaries of our city alone. I believe that there are serious issues as far as enforcement goes, and I think it's really not practical as well. I do think that it has serious economic concerns, and I agree with Larry that it's one of those things where we need to be taking action to protect the people in our community, especially our leaders of the future here, our children. But I really do think that it's appropriate that that kind of legislation and that enforcement be done at the state level, and I don't think it would be an appropriate use of the kind of law enforcement resources that we've talked about here for our city to take that on, but have the boundaries of that enforcement stop at the boundaries of our own community here.
Thank you. The next overall overarching question is about your vision for conservation and environmental responsibility. And there are some examples included in here. For example, Golden Valley did not seek LEED certification for the new Brookview. Golden Valley does not have organic recycling or an efficient garbage collection. Are there any plans for solar on municipal buildings, shoreline management around Sweeney Lake, Bassett Creek? So those are some examples cited by your residents. And again, what is your overall conservation, environmental responsibility vision? And the first person to go there is Mr. Ryan.
I'd have to say beyond the broad principles that are in the comprehensive plan right now, I don't think I bring a lot of technical background or expertise to how best to handle the resources that we have in our community and how to preserve them for future generations. Now, I place that as a high value, and I think that any decisions that I'd be making is to try to make sure that we're using the right decision-making process so that those values are incorporated into that. But I don't think I have any specific things that I would want to propose at this point. I think I should be looking at what the community sees as what we should be doing.
Thank you. Mr. Giesi, to be followed by Mr. Schuler.
You know, there's a lot of things we can do environmentally, you know. Former state rep Peggy Lepick is here tonight, and I remember when she proposed a bill and got it passed to change what's in our fertilizer here in Golden Valley, and it was a good move, because a lot of, you know, the phosphorus and whatnot that runs off into the street eventually gets into our lakes and creates a lot of different problems. So those are proactive approaches that obviously I would support. You know, and on my website, there's a lot of different things that I have listed, as far as rain gardens and battling buckthorn and... far as rain gardens and battling buckthorn and, you know, invasive species and all these good things. You know, planting milkweed, you know, I've got that stuff growing around my house where I planted a couple of years ago, because obviously the bees and the butterflies, you know, with the flowers, and I have a lot of wildflowers for the bees and the butterflies, the monarchs. I grew up with monarchs flying all over the place in Chicago, and they're really sparse today, because a lot of the milkweed has been mowed down on its way down to Mexico, because they're planting more corn, because the corporations are finding more money in corn than they are with butterflies. So, you know, I would work with, again, state and local and county officials when they identify things and getting people that know what they're talking about to come in and help us solve some of these problems.
Thank you. And Mr. Shuler.
We need to get real serious about the environment. It just depresses me seeing all these woods I used to plant turned into parking lots and suburban sprawls. And it's just on even global scale, something more than like 50% of animals have gone extinct since the 1970s. You know, 75% of solid waste is recyclable. Only 30% is actually recycled. Although, you know, I don't want two trucks going down the street, so it'd be nice to have some sort of a half-recycle, half-trash type of thing going on there. Genuine progress indicator is a way to measure our economy by also including the environment and social factors. And I think this would be a great tool for us to help go into the future and leave less of a carbon footprint there. I would definitely vote against putting a parking lot where we have native prairie plant communities right now. There's only 1% of those left in Minnesota because of what humans have done during the last 100 years with all the farming and agriculture. So we need to think more carefully on what we do regarding the environment, in my humble opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenquist, please.
Yes. Well, I'm excited that Golden Valley has been part of Green Step Cities and is doing a lot on the city level. And I'm also excited about what our community, as individuals and as organizations, are doing in terms of our pollinator groups, our garden club, what we're doing as individuals in terms of composting, and a lot of larger investment like solar. For example, the Brookview Community Center was mentioned. My husband puts green roofs on. I know that adds significantly to a project. Solar panels add significantly. And at a time when we are dealing with a large debt situation, maybe it isn't a time that we can do very large investments, but we can do small things. We can do things like training our businesses and our city staff about using salt on sidewalks and things appropriately, so we don't have excessive levels in our watershed. There has been a lot of shoreline management, and we can work with residents and instruct them about if you do live on Bassett Creek. What, you know, we can talk about what you need to do to protect that shoreline and protect the creek. We can engage and educate residents about fertilizer usage, about the things that we're using on our lawns and in our streets, about collecting debris and not letting our leaves go into the system. And so I think that there's a lot we can do as a city in terms of education, a lot of small things that can have a big impact.
Thank you. And Mr. Faunist.
I am the liaison to the city's Environmental Commission and a very active member of the League of Minnesota Cities. And it was there that I learned about the Green Step Program, which is operated out of the Pollution Control Agency at the state level. It took me two years to convince the city to join Green Steps, but we did, and we're making great progress on the 29 best practices that that program has implemented. We've incorporated into that as well, a climate action plan, or aspects of a climate action plan, to prepare our city for the future. With regard to the specifics that were mentioned by the question, the Brookview Community Center is LEED-qualified, the silver level, but to get the actual designation would actually cost us several thousands of dollars. And so rather than spend the money to have a plaque on the wall, we just invested it in the building and its energy efficiency. As a part of the larger garbage question that was asked earlier, I think the city needs to look at organic collection and how we are going to handle that in the future. With regard to shoreline concerns, Worth Lake is now off the endangered species list because of the work the city has done. That is true of Bassett Creek as well. We've done a lot to reclaim it.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to the next question. All candidates agree our debt is very high. How will they lower debt and pay for new fire department buildings, roads, light rail, et cetera? Is there too much spending? And the first question goes to Jillian Rosenquist, followed by Mr. Faunist.
Thank you. In terms of lowering debt, I think that is very difficult, and I would hope that we could continue on the path, I'm sorry, I'm a little coffee, that the current council has been going on, which is carefully looking at all of the expenditures in our future I think that, this is not my area of expertise, so I would rely heavily on the city manager and city staff in terms of how the financing should be done. But I think that it takes a lot of thoughtfulness and a lot of attention and a lot of serious consideration of every expenditure. And I really have supported the work that the council has done in the past four years and would continue on that same path.
Thank you. Mr. Faunist, to be followed by Mr. Shuler, please.
Thank you. We currently have a AA1 bond rating, which is very good for a city of our size. And that, of course, ensures that we have a lower interest rate in the bond market when we do need to take out a loan. We on the city council are committed to holding down our expenses, holding down the property taxes that you see leveled against your homes. But as was mentioned earlier, keeping this balance is a challenge. We have refinanced several of our outstanding debt, or debt, excuse me, using the interest rates that are currently in the marketplace. So where we might have had higher interest rates before, we've refinanced and gotten lower rates, saving literally hundreds of thousands of dollars for the citizens of Golden Valley. It's going to take time. Moving from $80 million to $30 million in debt is not going to happen overnight, but it's going to take focus and determination on the part of the folks that sit here at this council table to see that this gets done. And as far as the spending goes, we want to make sure that we're operating efficient and effective services. It's one of the highest-ranked provisions, if you will, noted by citizens in the Morris Leatherman survey that I mentioned earlier. So we want to continue to provide good services and contain costs at all levels.
Thank you. Mr. Shuler, please.
There's a few small things and a couple of large things we could do, just off the top of my head, try and reduce that debt sooner rather than later. Something simple we could do is change our elections from odd years to even years. That would actually save us about $15,000 to $20,000 every election. I mentioned cannabis earlier, and I'm mentioning it again. Colorado, if that's any indication on the revenue, we could raise, you know, they were making so much money off of this plant that residents were getting checks in the mail because they had all this leftover money that already went to schools and education. And it's going to happen, because, you know, like last year, there was one legislature who came out for that, and this year there was like 24 or something. So hopefully we can keep that pace up. That would just be a great crop to help us get out of debt. And then I would like to have, do more research and talk to more people, get some more ideas on how we can reduce debt without necessarily relying on building all these giant apartments and, you know, raising taxes and things like that. I think there's a lot of ideas we can come up with to help us.
Thank you. Mr. Giese, please.
I guess one way we can save is quit hiring Morris Weathermen, ask the residents what they want all the time. I don't know. What's that costing? You know, Sue Vernig is our finance director. She's a very smart woman. We've got a great city manager. You know, they have knowledge and they have experience, and they have other city managers and other finance directors in other cities that they bounce things off of. As a council member, for me to sit here, if elected, to say that I can figure out every formula and what to do this and what to do that, I'd be lying. But I do know how to look at numbers. I had my own business for 13 years, Augie Sewer and Drain Cleaning, which I sold last year very successfully. And I understand that the less you spend, the less debt you incur. We have to be very prudent with our dollars, the tax dollars that everybody provides through, you know, property taxes and whatnot that comes in through the city. So, you know, we'll look at the plan, let Sue Vernig come and present things to the council along with the city manager, and evaluate it to the best of my ability and approve what they recommend.
Thank you. And Mr. Ryan.
Well, I think that some people have touched on this already, but I think that it's pretty clear that my background has been in using fiscal resources in a very prudent manner. But I think that we've already identified that there are ways that we can bring down our staff. They've been identified by the city staff, and they seem sound, based on sound principles, basically restructuring debt with interest rates currently low. We have some restructuring methods that would be very effective in kind of following the kind of timeline that would continue the debt load reduction at its current pace, and I think we can sustain that. We just need to be diligent about making sure that we are implementing those things that have been identified already.
Thank you. And now, in the interest of time, it is time for closing statements. So each candidate will have one minute to conclude. And we will begin with, oh, we're going the same route we started with at the beginning, so Mr. Faunist, please.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks, folks, for coming out tonight. It's really important to our democratic process that people are involved and they know what's going on, especially at the local level, because, as they say, all politics is local. I'm delighted to call Golden Valley my home. It's a diverse and welcoming community in which to live, work, and recreate. It's been an honor to serve as your council member these past four years. Golden Valley has progressed on a number of fronts, including housing, transportation, and job creation. More work remains to be done, and I hope to have the opportunity to continue to move Golden Valley forward. I'm committed to public service and to creating a shared vision for Golden Valley's future that is vital and promising. I value open, responsive, and effective city government that encourages civic engagement. Please visit my website at www.larryfaunist.com for additional information and a listing of civic accomplishments. I'm Larry Faunist, and I will thank you for your support on November 7.
Thank you. Mr. Giese, please.
Thank you all for coming tonight and for the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I'm a First Sergeant in the Minnesota Air National Guard. The C-130s that you see out at the airport, there's about 250 airmen that work on those, women and men that work on those, and I'm their First Sergeant. I communicate very effectively with each and every one of them, and that's what I earned to do for you. Get elected and be a voice for you, but also understand that we can't do what everybody wants. Somebody has to make a decision. Somebody has to be unpopular at times. And as a First Sergeant, sometimes I'm not the most popular guy in the maintenance group, but I do what's the best for the maintenance squadron and the maintenance group as a whole. And that's what I will bring for you as a member of the council to the city. You know, I have done things within the city. One of the things I'm very proud of is Memorial Day and bringing observance to that in the over 82,000 currently pil WMIAs that are still unaccounted for since World War II. I ask your vote for on November 7, and again, thank you all for coming and for watching on TV.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenquist, please.
Thank you. Thanks again to my fellow Leaguers in Golden Valley, to you, our moderator, for coming in, and to our timers, and most of all, our audience. I really do appreciate your interest and your participation in this process. I encourage you to reach out to me via my website, Facebook page, email, phone, Twitter, with your questions and to use those platforms to learn more about me. I hope my commitment to our city and our future is clear, and that you're convinced that I have the skills, experience, and love for our community to be your next council member. And I hope you vote for me, Jillian Rosenquist, on November 7. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Ryan.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for kind of encouraging the participation in civic engagement, and again, through all of your attendance and interest. I hope that not only does that interest reflect kind of our community and the dedication to it just tonight, but also on an ongoing basis in the future. I've been a strong and thoughtful advocate for our citizens by providing leadership skills to stakeholders, understanding what their interests are, and delving into what the underlying concerns and issues, fears, dreams, hopes would be, and then finding equitable solutions in a thoughtful manner within the resources provided towards community progress. I look forward to serving as you, as your representative in the community here. I'm Jim Ryan, and I have information available on website and other issues at the table outside. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Shuler.
I want to thank everyone again for joining us tonight. It would have been really awkward if no one showed up. But I'm not the wealthiest individual. I probably have the cheapest house in the whole city, but I'm certainly resourceful. And my main priority is voter satisfaction. That's, I don't like seeing people ignored, you know, frustrated. We can do better. So, you know, I got about 600 votes in 2015. If each one of you who voted for me can get one person to vote for me, there's a hypothetical win rate. You don't need much in this silly voting system we have. Winner takes all. And then, yeah, visit my website, voteshuler.org. Please email me, call me, tell me what's on your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be introducing you.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Golden Valley, I would like to thank our candidates for being here tonight, and a special thank you to Melissa Lusselner for moderating. We hope the forum has helped the audience here and at home to make an informed decision. I would like to thank CCX Media Northwest Community Television for making it possible to view this program at home. Also, I would like to thank the City of Golden Valley for allowing us the use of the city council chambers. Replay dates on Channel 12 are October 23 at 7:00 p.m., October 25 at 10:00 a.m., and October 28 at 10:00 a.m. There will be other replays on Channel 16. In addition, this forum will be on CCX Media Northwest Community Television website and on YouTube. If you are interested in learning more about League of Women Voters, brochures are on the table. League members would be happy to discuss league activities with you, and we would be delighted to have you join us. Please feel free to stay and meet the candidates and ask questions. If you are new to Golden Valley or you have moved since the last election, you may register to vote at your precinct on Election Day or when you vote early or request an absentee ballot at City Hall. Pre-election registration ended on October 17. To determine if you are registered to vote and to find your polling place, go to minvotes.org. It is a link to It is a link to the Minnesota Secretary of State website. There are also links to candidate websites at minvotes.org. Early voting is open at Golden Valley City Hall during business hours until November 6, plus on Saturday, November 4. You may also request an absentee ballot to be mailed to you. I would like, now I would like a warm round of applause for our candidates and our moderator, and above all, remember to vote on November 7.